Good evening, Vanessa Davis, and welcome back from fall break. Tonight, we have our study session and committee of the hall combined for our meeting of November 28th. We will start with roll call, Director Sproul.
Here.
Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
I'm here.
And Director Smith.
Here.
And I am also here, so we are all in attendance and we have a forum. And I will now turn this over to Dr. Snell to lead us through our meeting.
Thank you, Directors of ALA Ratake. It's good to see you all here on the end of November already. Just our agenda today, I thought we could start with just a quick. Any one of you want to share about your WASDA conference experience? We greatly appreciate the time and energy that you give by attending that conference. So that's an, there's an opportunity, so you can think about what you might want to share. And then we're going to look in on our progress monitoring related to student experience and student learning. We've got a presentation from some fifth grade teachers about an outdoor school pilot that we've been including you in on their work. And then a presentation from Lucy Estrada Guzman on multilingual learners. And then I just wanted to preview, as Directors of ALA Ratake mentioned, November is kind of a different month in terms of our cadence. And so just give you a preview of some of the agenda items scheduled for December 12th. So with that, any of you want to comment on your WASDA experience?
I guess I'll go. I am, and Dr. Snell, you, you already know that I was wowed at my very last session. The other sessions were kind of like, oh, this is okay. And I almost didn't go to the session that was hosted by the Alma School District. Because it's such a small, small, small school district. But it was based on mass, it was mastery-based learning. And the things that they're doing there are absolutely mind-blowing. And they have, they've done it with a grant. And I guess there are mass, there's a mastery-based grant that you can apply for through the Washington State Board of Education. And they redid their strategic plan during COVID. And it's everything from early learning to career and college readiness. The things that they have done are pretty outstanding, the early learning piece. And just creating opportunities just through the mastery-based learning. Idea and how they have implemented that and are continued to implement it across grade levels. And how that opens up the opportunities for teachers to do new things with the students. And I was just, I was just sitting there with my jaw dropped. It was like, wow, this is really impressive, so.
I actually attended some different sessions than I think is, are typical. Cause I didn't go to any that were, the ones that kind of stick out are ones that weren't necessarily done by school districts. But more like resources within our state. One that I went to was done by DDA, so Department of Developmental Disabilities. And they just talked about, it was actually. A parent and student did part of the presentation. And so, and it was a student who kind of went through our system and went through different. You know, from district to out-of-district placements to residential placements and just the students' experiences, which was really. Informative, just to me as a board member, but also as a, as a school psych, you know, working in the schools. And then another presentation that I went to was from NAMI Southwest Washington. So looking at more mental health kind of resources. And they do presentations for families and for students about just mental health. Resources and things like that. So it was just helpful to kind of get an idea of how there are these community resources. Available for our schools and how we can kind of partner together. And also the keynote on the last day, we had the Washington State Teacher of the Year, Dana Miles. Who teaches at the Washington State School for the Deaf here in Vancouver. And her presentation was just great as far as her advocacy and just, again, that kind of awareness of. You know, she, you know, she is deaf, but she says, you know, I don't see it as a disability. And just how, how she identifies and how she advocates was just really powerful. Just in, in thinking about how we can advocate for students and just that awareness. Of some of the privilege that we have and some of the things that we aren't even aware of that. You know, as, as hearing people, you know, just things we don't think of. So yeah, those are kind of the, the highlights for me.
I'm going to jump in here because I went to the same presentation that Tracy referenced with the, the student and his mother. Who were presenting together. And it was just really interesting to hear about that government agency. And all of the things that they can do for families and students. But what was, my biggest takeaway was just how powerful it, the student's story was and how. The value of being able to hear his experiences firsthand and his mother's experiences firsthand. They presented together and just kind of reinforced that idea of how important student voice is, which I know has been a big priority in our work for the last couple of years now. But also how important the, the role of the parent is and, and making sure we're hearing those stories as well. And I would also say, I mean, it's every year, one of the most valuable parts of the experience of going up to WASDA is the ability for all of us to kind of. To go to these sessions together and kind of discuss what we're hearing and experiencing. To be able to talk with some of our staff, our executive directors were with us. And just being able to kind of hear these presentations and think about how does this information fit into our district? How can we take it back to our district and, and make the work that we're doing so much more, just better? And so being able to share that experience with you guys is always like a big, big part of it. And also I really appreciate having the EVs there as well. So thank you, Jeff, for letting them go again.
I'll just chime in that I had a more limited opportunity just one day to attend the conference. But I heard some great speakers, some great sessions. But a big highlight for me was actually the large district caucus. And not just the conversation itself, but then the connections, of course, made during it. And then, you know, expanding our network of just understanding that. District size dictates some of the challenges that we face. And so it's nice to have a network of district or school board colleagues across the state. So that was a big takeaway for me. One of the key conversation topics was around transportation and not just the transportation. Challenges we face with staffing, but also just the, the state formula for funding. And just some of the creative solutions that large districts have done, but also the budget shortfalls that districts are facing. So that was, that was pretty compelling for me. But like Wendy said, I think the time together is very valuable as well.
I had a great time at WASDA. I was a lot busier, not really able to attend a lot of the sessions, but I was giving a lot of the sessions. And I think one of my favorite sessions was Board Bootcamp. So it's our session where we basically do School Board 101 for all our new elected school board directors. And also just the refresh for any board member who wants to attend. So we had about 200 attendees. And so it was just, it was my first time doing, and it was a, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 in the afternoon. So it was pretty long, but it was, I think the energy in the room just felt really exciting and that people were wanting to learn and. Excited to learn and be part of their new boards. But I'd also say favorite part about WASDA is really spending time with the board and our executive directors. And our superintendent being able to just spend quality time together. And being able to get to know one another more.
Well, thank you all for, again, attending. It's a big commitment to be away from family and work to make that happen. And I know as a district, we benefit with ideas and reinforcing pathways that we're already on. And then tweaking or adjusting and making connections. So thank you. One of the unsung volunteer kinds of things that you do in this role that not a lot of people know about. So just as a quick reminder, when we do these study sessions, we are really looking at the vision of a graduate. As a part of our strategic plan and our goals to move students along this journey towards that vision of a graduate. And then tonight, we're looking at the student-centered experience portion of the strategic plan. Specifically in goal areas E1 and E2, Experience 1 and the Experience 2. And those are really focused on how does the experience enrich the student learning, right? And vice versa. So just teeing that up, I know that you all know that, but I want to always keep coming back to that in our meetings, that this is, there's a purpose behind this. Our first presenters tonight, Jolene and Tylee are representing some other teachers that approached their principals. And then here's a great picture of them. And then me and some other folks about an idea that they had. Connected with a movement across the state to try to give our kids some really enriching experiences. And I just want to compliment them because they've put a lot of time and energy into this. And this is something that's really easy to say no to because there's so much going on and lots of busyness and, you know, just worrying. But they are a group that really wants to say yes to kids and, and opportunities. And so they've secured grant funding for this pilot that they're going to tell you about. This is a preview of the parent meeting that they're going to be holding, or parent meetings that they're going to be holding. We wanted to loop you in because it's not just about this pilot and the grant. Is that their aspirations are to enable this for all of our students at some point in our, in our district. And, you know, as we're facing budget challenges and things like that, it's really important that we have some thoughtful discussions about like this. Where does the funding come from? How do we make this work? And they've got some great ideas about that. So with that, I'm going to shut up and I'll turn it over to our speakers tonight. And I'll just advance the slides when you want me to, okay?
Very good. Thank you for the introduction again. I'm Tylee Hunter and this is my teaching partner, Jolene Brick. And we teach fifth grade at Hazel Dell Elementary. We're presenting on our outdoor school pilot program for this year and hopefully many years to come. Just a little kind of, we're going to backtrack, last year this kind of started in May when Jolene, myself and our other teaching partner got to go to an outdoor school training in Spokane, Washington. We were just fascinated about the, the outdoor school experience and how enriching it can be. And we really just since May started to get the plan in motion and been working with state. State partners, community partners and local district partners to really try to get this up and going. For not just this year, but for many years after. October, we were fortunate to be able to attend another outdoor school training. This time, we were able to go with Franklin and Harney, two other elementary schools who are excited to pilot the program with us this year. The experience was, in my opinion, more enriching because they gave us an opportunity to collaborate with other elementary schools. And sometimes we feel like every school is kind of on their own, you're on your own with your teaching team. And it allowed us to really kind of see that other people are in the same position as us. And gave us an opportunity to work together, collaborate and communicate and get the process started. Can you go to the next one, please? So like Jeff said, a big part of it is the funding. We know that funding is tied across the board. House Bill 2078 was passed in 2022. The initial amount of funding available for outdoor school education experiences like this was about 10 million. It has increased since then and it continues, it continues to be increased each year. This is a fully funded state grant money awarded by OSPI. So it has nothing to do with the district budget. It comes straight from OSPI. It's awarded to communities who historically are underserved in science education and outdoor experience. This funding is awarded each year. It's just the caveat is that schools have to apply, reapply for, to receive funding for each year, but it's there. Out of 21 VPS elementary schools, 16 of our elementary schools would have received 100% of the funding. And the other five would have received 50% of the funding to be able to, you know, put towards outdoor school experiences. As you can see at the bottom part, there's a lot of research showing that there are many benefits from getting students out of the classroom and learning outdoors. It supports the holistic development of the student. And as a classroom teacher who's serving in a demographic who may be closer to the, the average screen time, as you see 44 hours. It's important, I feel, to get these students out and working on communication, collaboration and hands-on learning. The engagement goes up, their critical thinking, problem solving is increased. And we want to just give them a greater sense of environmental awareness of what's out there. And the kind of learning you can do outside of the four walls. Everyone knows the impact of COVID, oh, sorry, can you go back one more? Sorry. The impact of COVID and how that kind of negatively impacted our students. And more screen time, less opportunities to collaborate and develop their essential skills. So our goal in fifth grade is really to help students have the skills to be a positive leader, to be able to work on their collaboration and communication skills. And to be able to build some meaningful relationships with their peers and peers across the district. And before they enter middle school. So that's one of our fifth grade goals. Thanks to Jolene last year, she kind of headed an opportunity for our fifth graders to go to Mount St. Helens and learn for kind of a, an extended day trip. The students absolutely loved the experience. Everything that we heard from them was how excited they were to be outside, to be at a place that they've never been or very few have been. To the nature hikes that we got to go on, the small things from the fascination on the, of the ant colonies that they got to see. To learning about the different plants and animals that are native to Mount St. Helens. And lastly, just how the impact of Mount St. Helens had on others around them. We feel that students thrive the most and when given the opportunity to apply their learning. And that they do in the classroom with experiences outside of the classroom. And that's the outdoor school experience is kind of just that, being able to take what they learn here in the classroom and be able to apply it in an outdoor school setting. You can go to the next one. Thank you, Jeff. Who, so the three pilot schools are Franklin, Harney and Hazel Dell. Roughly about 200 students is what we're hoping to get to an outdoor school program this year. Where we are, we are working with CISPIS and developing our three-day, two-nights overnight educational experience with them. And then when, we're planning on February 14th through the 16th, that Wednesday through Friday. You can go to the next one, please.
Thank you. So CISPIS is located in Randall, Washington. It's about two hours northeast of us. In 2023, Auswa, which is the Outdoor Schools of Washington, created the first steps towards an accreditation program. That sites apply to, to ensure that these sites are high-quality for the students who attend outdoor school. CISPIS was one of the first sites in the state of Washington to receive the accreditation from Auswa. And this process really looks at the hiring and training of site staff, as well as creating school partner policies. To ensure equitable access to all students who attend outdoor school. A lot of the process also involves safety of the students related to emergency situations and health plans. So CISPIS has direct contact with local emergency services. A nurse is on-site. And part of the accreditation is they have to essentially plan for everything that could potentially go wrong. And have a plan for students on-site as well. CISPIS has met with our staff at all three schools, as well as our administration, got to go visit for a day. To tour the facility and meet the CISPIS directors. Next slide. One of the reasons that we chose CISPIS is because of their lesson offerings. So CISPIS staff actually takes over as guest educators for four of our big lesson blocks while we're at outdoor school. And these lesson blocks rotate, so a student will have one or two different lesson blocks depending on the day. So by Friday, they'll have received all four lesson blocks. These lesson blocks are really focused on integrating science content as well as social emotional learning. The goal of these lessons and CISPIS as a whole is to develop a deeper understanding of the world around our students. And as well, developing those problem-solving and critical thinking skills that Tylee mentioned earlier. I really like their lesson offerings because it links to a lot of our fifth grade science standards. Focused on ecosystems and the local watersheds. And so students will have repeated opportunities to come back to this kind of core learning as we go to outdoor school. But also partake in some of our other field trips like Columbia Springs here in VPS. Next slide. One of the outdoor school experiences that our students are most excited about is the meals and eating. So ahead of time, we will be communicating with families and CISPIS kitchen staff about what the dietary needs of our students will be for that specific group. At the dining hall, we eat family style. And so students will sit with their cabin groups. And students are responsible for setting the hall, serving the meals and cleaning up after meal times. They will rotate these responsibilities throughout our time at outdoor school. So everyone will kind of lend a hand to make sure that those tasks get done. It's a really good time to focus on relationships, sharing laughter. There's often like a guided prompt or a question to get students talking as they're eating. And I know from my experience going to outdoor school trainings, this is one of the most fun times, kind of reflect on our learning and build that community together. Next slide. Our cabin groups are going to be, be made up of 12 students, one high school chaperone or high school counselor, excuse me, and an adult chaperone. The cabin groups spend most of their outdoor school experience together. From the lesson blocks, they eat together at the dining hall and often are sitting together at, around the campfire each evening. One of the really awesome and unique opportunities that we have over time is to partner elementary schools based off their middle school feeder patterns. So schools, elementary schools who partner would go together. And students would be able to get to know some of the other incoming sixth graders before middle school even starts. Hopefully that would lessen the, kind of ease, ease those nerves going into middle school for our students. And create some bonds ahead of time. Next slide, please. We are modeling our outdoor school pilot off of districts surrounding us, like Ridgefield and a lot of other districts around the state. Our long-term goal is to build a program where students who attend outdoor school as fifth graders actually get to come back as sophomores, juniors and seniors. And serve as our high school counselors. This is a really awesome opportunity within VPS where students are going to be supported elementary through high school. And our hope is that the fifth grade experience is so wonderful that they'll be wanting to come back and serve as chaperones and counselors for us. This year, high school students will be recruited by VPS staff on our team. They will be interviewed. And then there is a training weekend in January hosted by CISPIS. So VPS staff and CISPIS staff will help train the high school counselors and the family chaperones that will be coming with us. Our goal over the next few years is to rely solely on high school counselors to staff our cabin groups. Next slide.
This is a basic breakdown of the funding for our three schools in this outdoor school experience this year. As a whole, we were allotted the three schools 90,000, a little over 90,000. Right now, the budget is sitting around 80,000, but the, these numbers are based on 100% attendance. So if we come in with less students, the contracts change, we have a little bit more funding. The second part of funding, so with the allocation grants that we were given from OSPI, we also have another pool of money through I-grants. And teachers and administration is working on applying for these I-grants to allow more funding. So we can buy some of the essentials for the students. We want to make sure that every family feels like they can send their child regardless of what they have at home or what they can send with their child. So we're working on getting more funding to be able to provide for extra sleeping bags, rain jackets, you know, gear for students. So they can, they can all go regardless of what they have. Like I said, the cost right now, it's, it's close to the budget, still coming in under what we have. But it is based on 100% attendance and that is our goal. We want all students to be able to go, but we know that cultural reasons. Some, because it's the first year, may elect not to send their child. And so the, the funding may, or the budget may be under what we're projected. Next slide, please.
So our pilot program has begun meeting with our SPED department and ML specialists. Our goal really is thinking not only about this pilot program, but over the next five years, we would like to grow to include all elementary school students. Our hope next year is that each, our three pilot schools will break up. And each one of us will take one or two others, new elementary schools. So this model hopefully will help ease some of that nerve on the teaching and administration side of what is outdoor school? How does it work? What's the load of the teacher and administration? So our goal is to be able to take new schools under our wing each year as we grow this program. And like Tylee mentioned earlier, some of our students' favorite memories have been out in nature for an afternoon. It's just a chance for us to get out of the city, get our hands dirty. It's one of the highlights of my job, hearing student laughter as connections grow. I can only begin to imagine the lifelong impact that spending multiple days in nature will have on these students and our high school and family members as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Do you have any questions?
I want to thank you both. Great job of walking us through a lot of information there. Can you tell us a little about the parent meetings that are coming up and how this information is going to be shared with us?
You want to take it or me?
I'll take it. So we have three family nights planned, starting this week and then ending next week. We've invited all fifth grade families to attend, kind of like a pizza night. So this week is Hazel Dell, so families will come in, have dinner, the whole family is invited. Hopefully, as we grow as a pilot program, hopefully the word of mouth also is, it was so cool, I can't wait to be in fifth grade and get to go. So we will give an extended presentation like this to the family members. We also have created a Google form for families to fill out with their kind of excitements, their questions, their concerns. So all three schools will dump those questions into one pot. As a team, we'll sit down and look at those and see what is kind of rising up as some of the biggest concerns that we can help support families around. As well as start looking at what are some of those health issues, those dietary needs? The, the barriers that would prevent families from saying a big enthusiastic yes right off the bat. And thankfully, we have some time and our network of planning people is growing so that we can address those issues. So like Tylee was saying, those, that 100% goal will be met this year.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I just want to really quickly say thank you so much. What an amazing opportunity for our students and so many of the attributes you described in the vision of problem-solving and critical thinking. Building curiosity, all the things that we heard in the strategic planning process of what our community wants in our students. And just the idea. And just the idea that we can inspire that lifelong learning. I mean, I think this is really. Those enriching experiencing, this is what the students are going to remember. They're not necessarily going to remember the math lesson on March twelfth, but they'll remember this. And so I, I appreciate your leadership and, and piloting this.
Thank you.
I also just want to say thank you. It was a great presentation. Um, it's great to see um switch. Collaboration, I think with some, with different schools. Um, and I also love hearing that you're working with our sped department and multilingual to make sure that they're also really included. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll let you go tonight. Just to keep the board apprised, this isn't anything that needs an approval from you or anything. Um, there is, we do need to make a, a procedural, just a, a MOU basically to a procedure. Because we don't have overnight travel for elementary. So um, uh, Taylor Richmond has looked at drafting in a, a modification for a one year pilot. Um, and then if we are able to expand this, we would probably bring this back as some sort of policy procedure. Just so that you would have an opportunity to review that um and, and know what we're putting in place. Um, also, um, there's resources from the state around risk management um that Jolene and Tylee have connected us with. Um, just some of the natural questions that might emerge with taking hundreds of fifth graders and high school students to overnight camp. Um, you know, trying to work through all those details. So I think at this point, um, we will probably loop back to you, board, after the experience in February. Um, to kind of share like what, what did we learn and, and what are some next steps? Um, and that, that may be in a study session or it may be in a report um that we put together. Um, so you all can let us know, you know, what, how you would like to engage with this. Um, you can tell that these teachers are um not just Tylee and Jolene, but the, the, the other teachers and the administrators are very passionate about this. And so um, like, when, when I get to work with people like this, I feel like my job is to try to help. Remove as very many barriers for them as possible as well. And so this is kind of a proactive approach of engaging you in this um so that um we can smooth that path forward. So, okay? All right.
Thank you.
I'm going to reshare my screen and introduce Lucy Estrada Guzman. Um, who will also kind of introduce the topic um tonight that is connected to student learning and student experience. So Lucy, um, it's all yours.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. And um, you, and um, just thank you for the opportunity. Um, that we have to my entire team and I to just give you some updates on um. How we are supporting our multilingual learners in our student experience and how we're helping um continue. Our, our goals as a district. The first slide really um is what requirements OSPI has placed on our department and our funding. And it really is about English language development and um meaningful access to uh content. And it's always a two-part approach. But when uh OSPI asks us about meaningful content, access to content. It's really meaningful access to content all day, every day. Next. Um, just a little bit of information on our um data and our student count. As we can see this year, so far in the first three months, our growth has continued to um continue. It's about two hundred and fifty more students from September to November. And the growth is in all areas, elementary, middle and high. Next. This is just a graph of showing how much um our, our population has grown. And really helping to uh for us to look at what our student demographics are now. And how we can help our students reach their goals. Um, that vision of a graduate that Dr. Snell was talking about and how we can do that as a department as well. Next. And what we did was we overlaid uh the total enrollment. Um, and our EL enrollment and just to see how our growth has continued to, to expand. And um again, how it continues to uh. Change and adjust our demographics across the district. Next. So who are these students? And next, please. These are uh, are in the number of students who are recent arrivals. Per school building at the elementary level and a percentage, just recent arrivals, not the whole ML count. Give you just a couple of minutes to look at this for seconds. Um, we can see growth really, uh, our largest population growth right now is at Roosevelt Elementary and Truman. But we have a number of schools that have students that are recent arrivals.
Next. Oh, Lucy, I have a question about this graph. Those percentages, that's the percentage. Like it says Anderson nine point three percent. The nine point three percent is like nine point three percent of all of the recent arrivals are from Anderson, right? Let, not nine point three percent of their population.
Correct. Nine point three percent of, nine point three percent of newcomers are at.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I was interpreting it correctly. Thank you.
Yeah. And I forgot to mention, just ask any questions or else I can just talk, 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 talk about this stuff. Uh, next, please. And this is um the graph uh that shows how many recent arrivals or newcomers we have at the secondary level. One um, one data point that I really have, I noticed was Geyser Middle School has nineteen. Newcomers or recent arrivals, depending on who you speak to, the terminology. Um, and MAC has nine. So it just showed us that when we gave the opportunity to have kids go back to their homeschool. Families have, and students have really wanted to go back home and go to their middle school. That uh where their cousins go to, or uh they've heard uh stories about these great teachers. And the experiences that they can have in their homeschools. So that has been a positive on that sense.
I have, I have another question, Lucy, sorry. Um, what constitutes like a newcomer, a recent arrival? Is it just like within the year of, of arriving? Or, and that's from like arriving from out of the country? Or is it, does it have to do with like language proficiency as well? Or like what, what's the definition of a newcomer?
It's both, one year or less in the country and you have to score a one point, one point five. Or less on the WEADA screener. And the WEADA screener is what we give to students to see if they are um qualifying for our program.
Okay. And so students just um, after a year, they're no longer considered a newcomer or recent arrival. But still might need like multilingual services.
Correct, yes.
So they automatically kind of graduate out of newcomer status, but not the multilingual status.
Correct, yes. And we'll talk a little bit about how you can get out of that multilingual status in just a minute. All right, next, please. Then also, um, what language groups are our students speaking? And uh, the, that demographic has not really changed. The majority is still Spanish. And the second language is Russian, third Ukrainian. Sorry, next. So this is the assessment, I'm sorry, I just got something in my throat. Um, the WEADA assessment. And this is the assessment that we give uh for students to be able to qualify for the program. Next. Also, um, the assessment that we give for students to exit the program as well. So we give the screener for student and, and students will qualify based on their proficiency on the screener. We give the WEADA access, which is once a year. And um, that's where we'll see if kids will be able to exit the program or not. So uh, but the WEADA is more than just an exam, it's actually ELD standards. And there's actually five ELD stand- standards. The first one is on language and social instructional purposes. But the other four are really different that many other assessments don't have. Which are uh standards for language arts, mathematical, um, standards. Language standards for science and social studies. So that's a little different because we are now looking at language standards across the content area. Next. So on the access test, this is how we um, kids will exit the test. They have to score a four point oh on uh the access test, kinder through first. And uh, second through twelfth grade at four point seven. There are least listening, reading, speaking and writing. If you score a four point five or um to exit, but you, in one of the areas you score below a four point oh. You still do not exit the program according to OSPI's rules right now. Next. So we wanted to give school supports on looking at this data and what do you do with data? Because a lot of times we have data and then we just have it, right? And so how can we help schools look at data and um. Plan for your students and their experience in this, in, in the school. So we created a, a sh- a data um protocol and a data sheet. That really, we hope will help guide schools in this way. Next. So these are, this is an example of a school's um proficiency rating by student and where they score. And if you notice on the purple one that says Y, if you could look all across, they had a four point seven. Or I'm sorry, a four point oh or above, and their overall score was a four point five. If they scored below, then I'll let's say in the speaking level, it's three point something, then they would not be able to um. Exit the program, like I had said before. Uh, next. Um, we also included information on where their students were and at what level. And we gave them information on um what would be some of the strategies that they could have. Uh, or conduct when they are writing their SIP goal and their PPP plan and so forth. And the goal for this is also to help teachers again, create those experiences in the classroom during their instructional time. So that's kids can be um acquiring the English language. The goal is really for kids to exit the multilingual department. Next. So what kinds of supports do we have and what do we offer to uh achieve that goal? Next. We offer, we've offered some professional development, um co-teaching, seven steps and the critical data review process. And also, um, we continue to expand our options at La Plaza. Next, please. Co-teaching, and I'll just go briefly into this. And if you really want any more data, I would, our conversations about this. I can really go into a little bit more if you'd like, but I know uh for time purposes that we really um. Can't spend too much about on each one. But a co-teaching, really, we, it's um a multilingual specialist with a classroom teacher. They talk about uh some of their um needs for their students. They plan. Uh, the first part is just planning and building that uh trust and relationship. They can uh co-deliver the instruction, they can collaborate on assessments. And then they go back to reflect on what their process went and what, how did it go? And um, it's really a cyclical process. And it's a piece where um teachers can just have that support and that um, that help. In uh planning and instruction and just working on the, those needs that their individual students have. Next. Seven steps, uh, we trained uh a total of four schools in October. And these are strategies, strategies that would really help kids um. Develop, develop academic vocabulary and language. And they're really seven steps that you can use across um any content area, K twelve. And I would say pre-K twelve, right? And uh, like speaking in complete sentences, giving uh structured conversations. At each level, uh, teachers can continue to do that. And we continue, we work with a trainer by the name of Carol Sala. And we hope to continue working with other schools to provide this kind of instruction. Um, this kind of professional development so that we can help um instruction, right? Um, when you have time, there is a video, uh, if you'd like to see about the experience we had uh. With uh the four Geyser and MAC training on October. It was really powerful and uh. We just heard great things, so we want to continue to support. Next. Our next one is, I think, the critical data process. Yes. Um, we are working with schools to also um help with the identification or over-identification. For multilingual students in the special ed process. And so just training on building that common foundational piece of knowing what we can expect of our multilingual learners. And um how we can support them. And so we are continuing with a process called the Critical Data Review Process where there's indicators. And we can um talk about those. One of the first ones is just have we spoken to the parent, right? And what information can we get from the parent? It's a table, we just go across and then we um, we review and we look at uh the factors. And we look, we produce notes and we will produce kind of a, just a small skill. And whether we're trying to determine, is this a language issue? Um, and when, and when I say language, I mean academic English language, right? Because our kids all come with some kind of language. Or is it a learning disability or something that needs to be moved on for their first sped review? And so hopefully we get a common understanding and we start training um everybody across our system. So that we can all have that same verbiage when we talk about our students. Next. So one of the um other activities that we do and we've uh been focusing on the student experience. And what we can offer for our students and families, we continue to expand on La Plaza, our night school program. And one of the things that you can notice on our um, our graph is that we have seventeen high school students. That are attending and eighteen middle school students. But of those high school and some of those middle school students, we wanted to give them activities and so forth. But yet they wanted to be in with the adults, learning more English and can, and um. Learning more, you know, real life, social English in a setting uh with, with their parents. And what we've decided to do is we want to really expand on that as another option. Um, and so in Jan, where we will be expanding on creating more of that uh, those student experiences. And um inviting more of the high school students to participate. We kind of see this as another enrichment activity, another intervention where we are um. What we call double dosing in English, uh, so that kids will continue to, to just develop their, their English capabilities. Within a setting uh that includes their parents and their siblings and their cousins and their aunts and uncles and so forth. We have whole families coming in and yeah, kids just feel like they are part of the community and they want to continue learning. Next. So next, our opportunities for um, for our student experience. And we put this up because um kids, we want kids to have a voice. And we want to be able to facilitate that voice through our department. And we want to help teachers to facilitate that student voice. And so we have had ninety bits where we invite our multilingual students. This is at Geyser to come and talk to parents about their experiences. Or come to talk to parents about their um dual language experiences. And we just want to continue to grow that and continue to give them that opportunity to. Talk about what has worked for them and what they love about our district. And then how can we help or what can we do just a little bit better to um improve their experiences? Next. So we hear a lot about newcomers and we saw the data on our newcomers. So what are our newcomer supports? Next. We've created a newcomer hub and we are having. We've created a newcomer hub and we are having uh resources for how we uh. If a teacher needs resources um for uh instruction. Or for family communication or for students, we are working on that so that this can be just a. A point of easy access for everyone and it's just a little bit easier for um. For everyone to have those resources uh at a click away. Next. And then we have um two newcomer uh itinerants that go to different schools and support the schools. And one of them is uh trained in a lot of uh trauma informed practices as well. And so she has been uh helping to train in um collaborative problem solving. But working with schools in the sense that sometimes. The behavior of our newcomers, because they don't um aren't, don't have the ability to maybe speak the language as well. Um sometimes they just don't know how to express themselves or what is happening with them um. In regards to the trauma at times that they received in coming to this country, right? So we hope that we help support that and we hope that we help support the teachers and the students. And just giving them a voice and a way to problem solve together to help um figure out what's happening with the student. And so this is just a quote that um one of the newcomer itinerants um. Wrote about her experience in helping the school with a student. And uh just the student that was um wanting to leave class, which. Sounds so simple when we talk about this, but we know yeah in the classroom and schools. When kids want to leave, it is can be disruptive for them, for the students, for the teacher. And how were we able to help them? We just realized that she really missed her cousins who were in different class and Mr. Ma. And um so given the schools, those supports to be able to hear their students. And what is occurring to them is something that we hope we continue. And that it's something that we really focus on. And um next is a thank you, I really want to thank you, I want to thank you for. Just taking the time to listen um to to some of our needs and some of our initiatives that we're working on. But um for your support and if you have any questions for me. I hope I didn't go too fast.
So I have a question, given the um depth of learning that has to occur. Across the multiple standards, um just, I mean, you're the expert. And I've just been reading a lot about knowledge based curriculum. And um it just sounds like it's just such a perfect fit because. I, you know, if you do the science and the social studies every as part of your language development, then then. The number of vocabulary words that they use appropriately within science and within social studies. And um am I right in thinking that you're leaning towards? Trying to develop that pathway for our multilingual learners?
Well, we are piloting an knowledge program.
Right.
At um RBG, it's called Camino, it's by Amplify. And we just started the uh the training process and we've tried, we've started training teachers. It's so far, it's been a great um opportunity and a great process, but um. I'll let you know how it goes along.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm I'm very excited to be to be hearing that because. Everything that I've read, and again, I'm not the. I'm not the expert, you guys are, but everything that I've read just is so. Intuitive to me, like, yes, the more we. Actually teach kids information and have them involved, the the less. Uh sorry, I'm the less uh. We have to worry about like specific vocabulary, you know, teaching vocabulary in isolation and this in isolation. They're more likely to pick it up and use those vocabulary words. While they're excited about learning the information about dinosaurs or Roman kings or whatever it is that they're they're studying. So I love the amplifier, the CKL. A curriculum. Um so and there's now there's so much research about knowledge based curriculum, there's a lot of opportunities. And we could even create our own.
Say is with all curriculum, um we have to facilitate the ability for students to practice speaking. And being engaged in the lesson uh and being able to produce, right? Produce language and part as part of their daily practice all day, every day.
I will say that um when I was kindergarten at Ogden. That on Fridays we had science and it um they. Yeah, I just created the stuff because there's no kindergarten science curriculum except for butterflies. And we would do chemistry and biology and my English language learners. Talked so much during that hour in a way that they didn't talk the entire rest of the day. And so it's to me, it's so intuitive that if we're giving them something to like really experience and learn about. That that's where the language is going to develop, especially given. How many strands they have to be proficient in in order to test out of the program? Plus, just to be, you know. Able to interact with their peers as they get older and older, um so. I'm excited about it. So, thank you.
I want to thank you for the presentation, I think um. Uh this was really informative to me, just really looking at our recent arrivals uh data and our multilingual. Learners, um. I think I have historically appreciate from a dual language perspective, but understanding who the students are that are coming into our district is powerful. Recognizing how our total enrollment has declined, but how steep we've increased our multilingual learners. It's important for not only us to understand, but our community too in terms of evolving um our system to meet the needs of the students we have. So thank you for that, um. I would love, a- as I know that you also oversee the dual language programming and and there's a lot of work there. I think it'd be interesting to s- to continue tracking how our students are exiting when they get to participate in those kind of opportunities. Um and I know that, you know, there's so much in progress right now, but you know, as we continue to look at our population of students. Who bring so much culture and language and gifts to our school system. Um how that, how those in classroom learning experiences. Benefit the exiting of multilingual learners. Did that, I'm sorry, I wasn't super eloquent there, but um hopefully that was clear.
Yes, and we can continue tracking um with their exit rates and entrance rates. Within the multilingual program and within dual language and definitely come back and give you some more information on that.
I will say it's one of my favorite parts of graduation season is just seeing all of the students who. Um have their seal by literacy and it's something, you know, I know that we're growing that, but just what a gift to have. Um proficiency in multiple languages at the with your high school diploma, I mean. Opening so many doors, so um anyways, thank you for the work you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you Lucy for the presentation, um I had a question around um. WEADA testing, I guess, I'm just wondering, um is that the only like tests that we're able to use? I guess I'm just wondering around um like, I guess how accessible really or how much it. I guess the accuracy of testing um for our students, because I'm just wondering, is it that our students are having these tests? But so they're not able to gradu- graduate out of um multilingual. Um is it maybe also the test that maybe, I don't know, I guess that's just like a.
Yeah.
I'm asking also personally, because I guess just uh my son is qualified as multilingual. Um and I'm, I know I was qualified as multilingual and I know that my English wasn't as proficient. Um so I I can see how I, you know, like prefer to see my son whose English is very proficient. And still qualifies multilingual, like I guess I'm just wondering how WEADA testing exactly works.
It is a rigorous exam. It uh but the one thing that I appreciate about the WEADA exam is that it tests the don't, the five standards. Not only um just uh instructional language, but it goes into the language of. Science and the standards, uh the language standards of math. So that um it is a more holistic exam in terms of really testing the students. Uh language capability across the content areas, which in the past we did not have. Those exams really were more of a just an, I mean, it talked about reading, speaking. Not as um holistic, in my opinion, as the WEADA exam is. And I would wonder though, um uh would he test out in fifth grade or sixth grade? I the, we do have, um we want kids mostly to test that up by by elementary school, but you know. Kids can test that out in sixth grade, seventh grade and the the. The research on dual language students, our multilingual students is that they probably will show most of their benefits of a dual language program. Um in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, so they get the, that's where we see a lot of their academic benefits as opposed to elementary.
And Lucy, do you think too that um? Because the content areas in the elementary school might not be um all that rigorous. You're sort of talking about the knowledge based curriculum, that they're not necessarily even getting. Um exposure to some of that language?
Well, I just would say that WEADA is new, this is probably our third year, it's our third year across the state. And so just teaching the expectations of the exam is something that we are working on. Um and that is the message that we are working on to help all teachers learn about it.
Well, and I'm just thinking, just along science, when you just look at the, when you. Just look at the Sback and um SBA and how few of our, of all of our students. Breach the science proficiency. Uh it obviously our multilingual students are going to have a tougher time doing that. So if we're on, if all of our, if of all of our students, only twenty-three percent are reaching science proficiency, then. Obviously, we're going to leave a lot of multilingual behind as well.
Well, I'm always available to talk all things ML and DL, I love it. And um if you ever have a question, please let me know and uh thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Lucy, um I I'll just pause here, this is, you know, we did progress monitoring again. And a little different with the outdoor school pilot, but definitely connected to the student experience and thinking about that. Uh and then Lucy's report on state of multilingual learners right now, um. I again, I just always want to check in, are we on the right track? Are there any thoughts, wondering, to notice that, you know, so just give some space to you as directors. Um to reflect on any of those before we wrap up tonight's meeting with a review of December's reporting.
I'd say yes, we are on the right track.
And and know that that question is like open ended for you too, right? As we build these agendas, I want to make sure that we're getting the right information to you. And uh as the um plan is on new, like that we would also like to start these presentations, then moving into these are the goals for the year. Based on the data that we have uh around exit rates from um multilingual services or things of that nature. So our team is working on that um as we enter into year two of the process, so. Um next on the agenda then is to preview, uh let's rotate here, share my screen. We want to um preview the December twelfth meeting and um. Uh just give you an overview of some of the agenda items that are on there. Um first, I, there's a late addition that we actually were able to resolve some last items. Related to um the VSA remodel. And so there is a final acceptance for the board, um as you know, these kind of go through the initial awarding of the bid. And then all all the actual work happens and then we come back to the board for the final acceptance. So that um is an item that would be uh up for your consideration. We have an oath of office uh on the December meeting, so that's exciting. Uh Director Dekker, Director Sproll and Director Smith. And uh I believe Greg Kimsey will be in attendance, so we'll do that at the beginning of the meeting, um. No, I did, I'm sorry, yeah, I just read it and it's it's off of probably a previous one. So it would be Director Dekker, Director Sproll and Director Barrows.
I'm getting sworn in again, I mean, I don't know.
Apologize for that, uh Tracy.
Okay.
In the uh superintendent's report, one thing that I wanted to add um is just, uh we've had some questions about curriculum access. And so I know we've had previous presentations from our curriculum team, but I would like to just again. Uh make sure the public knows how they can access our curriculum and the standards. Um because I think a lot of times the questions that we're getting um in public comments, sometimes. Um the answers are there and maybe people aren't able to or just don't know the pathway. So thought I'd spend a little bit of time on that. Um we do have some excellence awards and student recognitions again at this meeting. Um we have our normal public comment time. Um we have approval of minutes, the employment report, we do have an instructional materials review. Um I'll pull this up just so you're familiar, um. Taking a little bit of time to pull up here. So uh it has the the title that's up for consideration, these were brought forward by the instructional materials committee in their meeting in on November fourteen. Um if you click on this, it'll allow you to go deeper into the text um and see the original report. Um so that's on there, uh if you have any questions, please let us know. Under consent agenda with fiscal um services, there is a recommendation. Um our emergency management system uh is part of our upgrade. Uh and looking at our data services, uh it's time for us to look at how do we alert in emergency situations? Um and so there is a proposal uh for your consideration here about a contract. Um with an existing vendor that we have Raptor, which we use when people sign into our our buildings. Um more to come on that one, but this is the original or the request for um the contract. Because this is like an emergency services thing, we'd look to kind of pilot this in the spring. So that staff aren't using a new system for the very first time in the fall when they come back to school. Um so we'd have kind of two systems in play and and do some tests um this spring, uh so that's a contract for that. We do have a a con- a contract for your consideration uh related to a student service in a program here. Um and so that program is, where was that, Heritage Schools? Um and you can see the the amount there, the background information. We have um bringing forward from a policy standpoint, the uh second reading and potential adoption. Of the one that you all uh have been working on since August. Um and this is related to Board of Directors' operating commitments and protocols, um so that's on the agenda. And then there is also an executive session um potentially scheduled to discuss the performance of a public employee. Um and so that one, we would look at uh. You know, I s- sometimes we modify that as we get closer to the meeting, just based on your schedule, um so. So that's what we have currently, there could be an item or two that gets added and we'll make that note to you in in weekly updates. Um but I'll pause and see if you have any questions about any of those items.
I do know that we need to vote on our new chair and vice chair, so I'm not sure.
So that will be an item that we have to add for sure, because that was um the nominating committee was put into place at the November meeting, so thank you.
Is um Greg Kimsey coming out for the oath of office, I know he has in the past, so okay.
He's planning on it, um Sylvia. He's planning on it. Um, Sylvia connected with him. Okay, I made a note of the committee vote, um, directors of all this, so we'll make sure that we add that um. We'll look at the language that we used previously last year and and mirror that. Uh, so with that, I don't, I don't think I have anything else. I'll turn it back to you, directors of all of our ticket.
Do we have any final comments? No, already. Perfect. Um, thank you, everyone. It was a very informative meeting tonight. Um. Our meeting is over at six forty-two P M. Thank you.